Good evening. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session with hybrid meetings. Today is May 4, 2022. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 594-53 subdivision echo of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code 54950. As such, the federal Americans with disabilities, while this meeting will be simply open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate in comments via Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of this agenda for participating. Uh, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Father, Lord, we come before you tonight, Lord, and first of all, Lord, we just want to lift up the community of Uvalde, Texas, Lord, and that horrible tragedy, Lord, that took place today. God, we think about the families and the children that have been affected, Lord, and ask that you send a comforter alongside them during this time. And Father, Lord, for us here tonight, God, I just pray that, Lord, we would be grateful for what we have here, Lord, in this great city of Riverbank. And, Lord, I'm just asking tonight that, Lord, as this city council has come together, our mayor and the council members, Father, that, Lord, as they continue to do what they've been voted in to do, that we would come alongside them. As we have an opportunity here tonight to share concerns and our opinions about certain things, that, Lord, when it's all said and done, that, God, we would come together and do our part to continue to make Riverbank a great place to live. Father, I think about the first responders in our community, Lord, that you would protect them and our children and our schools. Continue, Lord, to show us how we can protect them and continue to watch over them. Lord, help us, Lord, to be in unity tonight, and that though we may disagree, it doesn't mean we dislike each other. But, Father, Lord, we have one common goal, and that this place would be a place that people would look forward to living in. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yarabe?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Here.
There will be an agenda change. We'll have the, uh, presentation prior to public comment. Conflict of interest, any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Saying none, we're going to move on to the presentation. This is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2022. And I'll see Shelley, Lilly, and Kevin up here at the podium.
Where do I stand, Norman?
Don't care. I don't know. All right. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2022. Whereas Family Support Network has been serving the Riverbank community since 1993, and whereas our mission is to improve the well-being of families and communities by providing increased access to resources and services that support mental health, wellness, prevention, and early intervention, as well as health education classes, parent support groups, and school readiness programs in English and Spanish. And whereas our vision is to sustain ongoing advocacy for bringing critical services to the underserved populations in our community through locally accessible activities, bilingual staff, and a trusted safe place for individuals and families to ask for and receive information and support that is culturally appropriate. Whereas, the Green Ribbon is International Civil for Mental Health Awareness, and whereas the focus of this effort is to promote the importance of good mental health, well-being, and stigma reduction within communities, individuals, and families. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank hereby proclaims May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month. So, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Now, who's going to have this on my I love me more? Do you want to have it? Okay. So, we're going to get a picture? Here we go. Who would like to speak, Kevin? I hear you were elected.
I was not, and I'm in Alabama.
Please do.
Um, thank you, um, the mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council member, and the member of public. I'm really honored to be here today on behalf of our director, Mr. Ruben Imperio. He cannot be here tonight, but he sent his best. He had a scheduling conflict. But I do want to, um, first of all, acknowledge all the work that our Pomontores have been doing in this community. So, thanks for all the work that you're doing. And Shelley, thank you for your leadership. Great city. So, I want to send, um, I want to make sure that I convey a message, how important it is. And I'm so blessed to have this proclamation. And May is a Mental Health Awareness Month, and it's so important for us to seek help, and it's okay for us to seek help. All of us in this room, myself included, and my loved ones, well-experienced on mental health symptoms in our lifetime, whether it's mild symptoms or serious symptoms, it is okay for us to seek help, just like any other illnesses. Uh, the earlier we can seek help, the better it is for us. So, if you have health insurance, please call your health insurance carrier to ask for mental health services that include substance abuse, um, issues. And if you have Medi-Cal, please call, look at the back of your card. You should have a health plan. It is Health Plan of San Joaquin or Healthnet in this, in our county. Call that number and ask for help. Or you can call our access line, county access line, 1-888-376-6246, and our crisis line is 558-4600. Um, so I want to end by saying, um, that thank you for the City of Riverbank for acknowledging this month. May is a Mental Health Awareness Month. And I think I forgot to introduce myself.
Yes, yes.
So, uh, like I said, my name is Kevin Panyanawung. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for the Department of Public Health in San Marcos County. I'm also the Associate Director for the department. So, I'm right behind Ruben. So, really thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, city council members, I'm just beyond grateful and honored to be a part of this today and amongst the support that we feel at the City of Riverbank and everybody here and the community at large. Beautiful community. Just, um, I'm so appreciative. And, uh, on a day like today, Stephen Wonk, keep it brief, brief before I get a little emotional. It's so important to spread the word that mental health awareness is important and to seek help at the onset and to wrap your arms around those that may be struggling to reach out for help. So, again, I wish to say my deepest thank you and gratitude. And I'm Shelley Lamar. I am the manager at Family Support Network, Oak Valley Hospital District. And, um, I'm going to introduce now a woman I have the privilege of being a part of the team with. Her name is Luli Ara, and she is a Riverbank Pomotara. Pomotara is so important, and it's growing, and it's so needed all over. So, Luli, introduce yourself.
I'm Luli Ara. I'm the Pomotara, Riverbank Pomotara, and I'd just like to say thank you very much to the City of Riverbank for all the support that we've used in this program. I've been working on this program, uh, with my co-workers, Rosita Oma. I have to mention her because she's my mentor, and she's behind, always behind everything I've been doing in this community. She was guiding me, and I think that mental health is really important to do the awareness of the community, and especially after the pandemic. We need to talk more about the services, the resources, but most the prevention. And that is my job, working in this community and the prevention and the well-being of the community. And thank you very much for the support.
We're going to move on to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Public comment, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jamie Agers. I live at 7730 McHenry Avenue. That's within the project area of the proposed Riverwalk development, which I'm opposed to. Um, I'd like to share with you that of the 1,500 acres in the proposed development, 90% of that ag acreage is within the State of California's farmland mapping program. And within, um, that area, the majority of the land is designated as prime farmland. That's the highest designation in the program. I'd like to read you the definition of prime. Prime farmland has the best combination of physical and chemical features able to sustain long-term agriculture production. This land has the soil quality, growing season, and moisture supply needed to produce sustainable high yields. Um, and that's based on the most current version of the state's map, which is dated December of 2019. The mapping program maps all parcels, ag parcels of 10 acres or greater. The map is updated every couple of years. Um, so again, 90% of the acreage within, um, the proposed Riverwalk development is within the state's mapping program, and the majority of it is prime. Homes should be placed on soils of lesser quality, not prime ag land. So, when this project comes before you, we urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barney Agers. I live at 7730 McHenry Avenue. I oppose Riverwalk. You've heard me speak before. I'm not going to bore you with my past, uh, reasons for opposition. Recently, I was in a, um, a meeting with some people that have done real estate development for many years in the Stanislaus County area, and threw out a question. Tell me the difference between the Tivoli or Tiboli, however you pronounce it, development that's proposed, and Riverwalk. And the eyebrows went up, and they said, well, that's a stupid question. Uh, Tivoli isn't in a floodplain, and Tivoli isn't prime farmland. Riverwalk is. And they said, I wouldn't buy into property there for myself. Would I feel good about selling lots to people in such a potentially hazardous floodplain area? I'll change the subject a tiny bit. Aunt and uncle lived up in the Yuba City area, and for years, they feared they were going to be flooded out because of the river up there and the lack of proper levees and, you know, protection. So, what my point is, please think about the potential legal implications if in, if that is developed into residential lots and whatnot as proposed by Riverwalk. What would be the legal impacts for Riverbank and the people that approved it? Just ponder that perspective. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Dan Wetstone. I live at 7824 McHenry Avenue. Uh, the point I guess I want to make tonight on the way in, I was, uh, just passing all of this wonderful acreage of grapes and orchards between Riverwalk and, say, Morris Nursery. So, why do we want to just jump way over there, you know, to the Riverwalk by McHenry instead of, uh, building out from the city? I just think it's just a, a big jump, and we should, uh, uh, work incrementally out from the city. Thank you.
No other public comment? All right, now we're moving on to the consent items. Consent calendar consists of item 9.1, wife reading, 9.2, approval of May 10, 2022, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board minute, item 9.3, second reading by title only, and adoption of ordinance 2022-003, approval of development agreement for the heritage collection at Sierra Street subdivision at Sierra Street tentative map 01-2021 relating to real property located at 6448 Claus Road, APN 062-020-001. Item 9.4, adopt a resolution authorizing the city to implement teleconference public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, allowing the city to continue a hybrid virtual meeting environment. Item 9.5, adopt a resolution calling and giving notice for the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, for the by-district elections of councilman, member District 1 and council member District 3, as required by the provisions of the laws of the State of California relating to general law cities, to request the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors to permit the county elections official to render election services to the city, and to request the consolidation of said elections with the statewide general election held on the same day. Do I have anyone wishing to pull any items? If anyone wishing to comment on the consent calendar? Saying no comments, I'd like to see the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Yarabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Romatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 11.1, adopt a resolution granting an appropriation request for an increase in budget from General Funds Reserve for Centennial mural.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight's presentation with regards to one of the many items that we had scheduled, uh, this year for our centennial celebration. I'll bring up my PowerPoint that we did here. So, one of the items that we have proposed as part of our centennial celebration is a mural. Uh, this mural is slated to go on the back wall of the stage that is currently located at our Plaza Del Rio. Um, so we have been in discussions with our sort of go-to muralist here for the City of Riverbank, Alexandria Riddle. Uh, she has done every single mural that you have seen throughout the city, um, whether it was by her hand or the design for it so that our residents could participate in the painting of that. Um, the mural that's across the street, um, at the Plaza Del Rio that you currently see from the dais was a painting of Alexandria. And there's also a painting here on the side of our building at City Hall North that is also by her, and you'll see various other murals that have been painted as well and throughout our downtown. And so, as part of our celebration, we did commission her to, um, look at various or to come up with various sketches, uh, for our review and for council feedback as to the final design. Uh, because of the, um, lack of supplies that we're able to get readily, we wanted to make sure that we gave authorization for her to begin, um, this mural as soon as possible. So, she is looking to purchase her supplies currently and then would begin the actual design, um, in July so that it could be completed by our August date for our final, um, celebration. So, this is the first sketch that she presented to us. Um, you'll notice there's a variety of city buildings that are represented, some of them old with the water tower. Um, you'll notice this is our building down here on Third Street. Uh, we've got the rocket that's represented here. We also had the river that's running through, um, the, the design as well. Some of our newer buildings, um, here we've got the Crossroad Shopping Center sign, um, and we've got Galaxy Theaters that's also represented off to the side. Uh, when we looked at this, we loved the idea, but if you recall, this is a backdrop that we use quite a bit, um, for a lot of our events, and so we thought it may be a little too busy for this particular area, especially when it comes to events that we have, um, in photographs that might come out from that. So, we did ask her to scale it back a bit. Um, the next design is a bit scaled back, as you'll notice, because she removed the vehicles that were there, um, the individual silhouettes that were, um, depicted. We still have all of some of those, you know, key landmarks throughout the city. Um, but we did ask her to include, um, some additional details in some of the additional sketches that she provided. Um, sketch number three is similar to sketch number two. It does highlight a bit more the Riverbank 1922 through, through 2022, 100 years of action, um, that's at the forefront. And then we did ask if she could include more of the rail. And so, this fourth sketch does include our, the train on the rail, um, in a, a larger fashion. And we did ask for one final sketch, which shows the, um, beginning of the train, um, but still highlights most of the buildings in the background, which is really our focus, is sort of Riverbank through the times and through these past 100 years. Um, so, the one that we have presented in color is that final sketch number five. Um, this has been the preference of the committee as well as staff, um, in terms of representing Riverbank. And you'll notice with the color now, you, we highlight more of the river and how it actually interacts with, um, our railroad. And so, those were two key points that we wanted to make sure that we focused on, um, and represents our city very well. Sort of the beginnings of it with the rail and then currently with, um, all of the access that we have to the river at Jacob Myers Park. Um, so this was our preferred sketch. Um, today we are seeking feedback from the city council with regards to your preferred sketch, or if this is the sketch, um, that you are preferring, then we would look to see if there was any additions or subtractions you would like from it. Um, additionally, we'll also be requesting, we'll also be requesting an amendment to the budget due to increase in the cost of supplies and some of the equipment that she's going to need in order to, um, get the, the mural done. Um, we are looking for a budget increase of $8,000 from the original $3,000 that we, um, have already allocated. And so, with that, I'm going to go back to this design and ask for council, council feedback and, um, be able to answer any questions you might have. Uh, Gabby Hernandez, who's been working with the muralist, um, is also available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? So, I think Alexandria's work is just, uh, fantastic. So, my, my preferred option is going to be the one with the full train. I think it's going to be number four there. Uh, so when I think of kind of like murals, uh, like some of the newer ones I've seen around, you know, they're kind of interactive, right? You'll have like the butterflies, and you can stand there or something like that. So, I was wondering if, and I don't know how you would do this, but maybe the, the number four with the train and somehow like residents can kind of like pose with it and kind of interact with that. And then I don't see a ferry in the river. I know that we tried to add one with a person, and there was like some issues with that. But if we could at least try to get like a little ferry in the river up in the corner somewhere, I think that's a big part of, you know, Riverbank. So, but that's just my two cents. So, but that's just my two cents. Thanks.
Um, my vote is for sketch five. It would be great to be able to put under a hundred years of action, they can do it in Spanish also and even smaller, that'd be great, but it looks awesome.
Are you able to show us number four?
Yes.
Please.
And this one we have the, the train is more in the forefront.
Well, initially I had, I like number one, but I did have a bunch of changes for it because I wanted more of nineteen twenty-two, like, I want my feedback, but for nineteen twenty-two to have more of the, like the older cars on this side and more of a, you know, older scene. And then on the twenty twenty-two, to have more of the newer cars and the new buildings and that kind of stuff. But I, I think I like number four also because it has the full train. And once we see that in color, I think we'll really like it. That's my opinion.
So I li, I like that idea. Maybe they can kind of incorporate the two, like the left side, some of the older stuff, the right side, some of the newer stuff.
Yeah.
And I still like the train and just kind of make it interactive, right? If it's our backdrop, maybe just kind of make it fun, just.
Yeah. And that's a good ideal about the interaction with the river. If it, we, maybe we could have just the, you know how at one time they had just a flat board and they were pulling that across from one side to the other side? That was the transportation to get across the river? So maybe we could have something like that. Doesn't have to be big, but just that ideal of that was the transportation back in the day.
Okay, I support number four, which is what the committee and the other people were doing. And my big thing is there's too much busyness in the picture. If you get too much business in the picture, you're not going to see it clearly if you're coming down the street. And I would rather, I don't want to see too many small things because they're not really seen when you come down the street and, you know, you don't want to put too much on it. Thank you.
Well, I looked at it and I liked small, so. My question is, are the paints available right now?
So she has already placed a significantly large order, knowing that the backdrop of it is most likely what you saw in the color photo. It was more of what's in the forefront, which is the discussion that we're having now about, is the train larger? Is it smaller? Is it, is there anything we're going to add to the forefront? So she has started to place an order for those because we wanted to make sure that she had them available for her July start date. So we did use that initial budget so that she could start to make that purchase.
All right. I, I know we want to get the, the ferryman in the picture, but that was before agriculture. And agriculture started off with wheat, rice and barley, I believe. We didn't get to tree crops until, what was it, thirties or forties? But it doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter. It shows agriculture moving forward to the future. You want to do a half a train on one side, they have followed by Amtrak on the, kidding. But no, four or five, flip the coin, whatever, however you guys want.
I need to correct myself. I meant number five, not number four.
Okay. So how many for five? How many for four?
You're the tiebreaker, Mayor.
Tiebreaker, Mayor.
We're going to go with number four. I, I like number four, I like number five. I think they're all great concepts. But wait a minute, audience, public.
Here we go. Tiebreaker, you guys.
Four or five?
Show hands, number four.
So here's number four and there's number five.
Okay.
And five?
That's the majority already right there.
Okay, right there. Okay, we have, we have four as the majority.
Hi, Captain.
All right. Thank you for participating in that.
Our impromptu poll.
That's right. Any comments on any of this before I bring it back for a final?
I have a comment.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a way, because we, we're looking at all the, you know, the history of it all, but just the sign in itself. I noticed that a lot of it says the city of Riverbank and I don't know if that was, there was a way to incorporate that, make the letters a little bit more blocked and bold so that, that's the first thing that people see.
Yeah, good idea.
What is up on the?
Water tank.
Yeah.
Riverbank?
Does it say Riverbank? Yeah, the color one.
On the water tank.
Crossroads of Riverbank.
Yeah, there is.
I think Riverbank is well represented and we do know we're a city, but that was a good comment.
Yeah, so here it says Crossroads Riverbank and then down here is Galaxy Theater.
You might move the tree over there, don't you?
Well, somehow it always goes missing on the sign, if you notice.
Okay, all right. So I bring it back, I believe we have a consensus or number four is the option and so we can move forward. And the best of luck for her getting the materials. I know painters are having extremely difficult times getting paint. Some, some houses don't have the exact round they wanted.
So while the goal is to try to have it for August, we may need to be a bit flexible.
As long as something is presentable, you know, if, if not, you can put my image up there. Someone's going to get that and think it's real. Okay, we're going to move on to item eleven.
The Mayor, we do have a resolution that accompanies this with regards to the budget amendment.
Oh, that's right. Okay, um, do we have a motion for, to, um, um, increase the budget by not to exceed eight thousand dollars to fund the mural labor and materials in the celebration of the city of Riverbank one hundred?
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional money in budget.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second.
Councilmember Barmatina?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And one comment, thank you to the Centennial Committee doing a fine job. We appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you.
We may put some additional burdens on you. Item eleven point two, adopt a resolution continuing the approved River Cove River Access Closure Plan.
The Mayor and City Council, last year in March, the City Council discussed a closure plan for the access that's located in the River Cove subdivision. The intent at that time was to ensure that we would allow for the regrowth or repair and regrowth of our natural habitat in that area, which unfortunately had been damaged due to the fact that residents were using that location that has direct beach access to our river. One of the things that we wanted to make sure that we did this year is that while the Army Corps has been extremely grateful that we did that closure, we want to continue that regrowth. Currently, although we initially had planned to do replanting ourselves, we wanted to make sure that the natural habitat kind of grew back so that we didn't introduce any plants that were not, you know, natural to that area. So the proposal for today is to continue that closure. The last closure did expire on November first, twenty twenty-one, so we wanted to extend it an additional year to November first of twenty twenty-two. It would be effective as of tomorrow. We would update all of our signage to make sure that our residents are aware that the closure does continue. Notices will be given to all of the River Cove residents so that they also are aware that the closure continues. We would update the fencing because there has been some areas where it has been damaged, unfortunately. And then with regards to enforcement, we would also have ONTEL who would do continual sweeps. And then we also have our Riverbank Police Services staff that would be available. We do have SUE on via Zoom and then we also have Sergeant Howard in the event that you have any questions with regards to any enforcement that was done last year or any other areas that were under SUE's jurisdiction. We're available for questions, but tonight's proposal is to continue that closure through November first.
Are there any questions from the council?
I, I'd like to make a comment. River Cove has been a problem in the city since the time I've been on the council. And last year, they were the happiest that they'd been with what was going on. They had less problems by what we had done. So that's going to make it better again and it'll give the plants more time to mature and make the Army Corps of Engineer be happy and keep the citizens of River Cove happy. So I support it.
Thank you. Is there any public input? Saying no public input, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion that we take the item as so stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Go call, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Matinas?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, now for comments report, staff comments.
So we have a couple of upcoming events that we would like to make sure that our public is invited to and that they are aware of. Hopefully I don't steal your thunder on this one, Mayor, but we do have our Memorial Day event on Monday that is at eleven o'clock in the morning at our community center near the Veterans Wall. Please join us that day. And then we have our car show and picnic, which is on June twenty-fifth at the Riverbank Community Center. That will be from eleven to three. The event is free to the public, including the picnic, which will be hosted by the city of Riverbank. And then I will have Michael come up to give you some updates with regards to our water services here at the city.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So let's go good news, bad news. We'll do the bad news first, right? I'm sure that you all have been hearing some from the residents about pressure, issues we've been having with water pressure. So currently we're down by four wells. Well ten, which is Oakdale Road, you know, is the well that has the nitrate problem. We've been working diligently to come up with a solution with that. I actually have a meeting with DWR Thursday afternoon with a solution that we think will be viable, that we can get this well back into service without drilling a new well or putting wellhead treatment on. So if they buy off on it, hopefully we can go in and, and rehab the well and then set it up so we can pull from a zone that doesn't have any nitrates and we're able to pump water again. And this will probably be towards the end of June, middle of July. And well ten is one of the largest wells we have, so unfortunately, we're going to have to limp along. We have Jackson and Wharton wells currently down. We're having some case issues with that and we're currently working on that. We were able to get Wharton back up and we had to replace the pump that has, they have submersibles. Had to replace the pump. Unfortunately, the new pump that they send us had a cracked case. So we had to send it back. So now we're still on a waiting list to try to get another pump. Part of our problem is being getting any types of parts or pieces. The supply line for anything electrical or electronic right now is just, for lack of a better word, crap. It's really hard and there are some long delays because of it. And part of the issue with well ten too is that we need a driller to do the work when we rehab this well. We have been able to, I have been able to with, with Neil's help from KSN line one up and I think they can get to us rather quickly, but we're waiting for their proposal to see what the timeframe is going to be. Because when we went through the, the process of trying to locate a driller, we're being told that you're a minimum of a year out in order for a dw, a driller to be able to get to us because they've got that much work. So in that case, we'll, we'll hopefully get Wharton and Jackson back up. Once we get those two back up and with people dealing with the watering of their lawns and this kind of stuff, then we will be able to, we'll still probably see some pressure drop, but not like they've been seeing the last couple of weeks. So the second thing is that, and I'm sure that all of you have been reading in the media about Newsom and his executive order, it could very well come, be coming up, it's executive order N dash seven dash twenty-two, which is a new drought strategy, strategies that he's been coming up with. Now, prior to this even coming about, we were working with Patrick Malone with KSN on a process to address this executive order. Because in this executive order, basically they're telling you that you have to do reductions. And the reductions that they're classifying them are called unconstrained reductions. Meaning the unconstrained meaning things like landscape irrigation and this kind of stuff that we have not a lot of control. So in this process, we went through a reiteration on, with KSN to set this up and we did what's called an annual water supply and demand assessment. And this has to be reported to DWR. And we also will, coming up probably June fourteenth, I mean, sorry, May fourteenth, come on, Michael, get the right month, June the fourteenth, council meeting, we'll have to pass a resolution of, as part of Newsom's executive order that says that basically there are things that we will have to contend with and the unconstrained reductions are won. In our case, it'll be about twenty-one percent of our water production. And Patrick has been working really hard with this and we think we've came to a conclusion and we can meet their twenty-one percent unconstrained reductions with a couple of little things, right? Basically what they've done is they've set it up and you have different areas and categories that you can pull percentages from. So one of the big things for us, you're probably not going to like this statement, but we need to go ahead and go back to a water conservation officer because that gives us ten percent right off the top from April to October, right? That's almost half of that twenty-one percent. And then another thing that we can do, which is going to be fairly easy, is just to run some type of education program about our aqua hop, how that can be used to, to do that. And between those two things and our normal stuff that we already have, we can meet that twenty-one percent unconstrained result. One of the things, however, that could vary will be coming down the pipeline with this executive order is that they basically, they're looking at addressing the impacts of the drought throughout the state and they're looking at banning irrigation on what they're calling non-functional turf. I mean, you're not watering your grass. And so far, the definitions I've heard of non-functional is the only thing that you should be still watering will be parks, sports complexes, schools and those kind of things. So it could very well come to the point where they will ban landscape irrigation, meaning we're not going to, the residents are not going to be watering their yard. They haven't came out with a total definition yet. These are points that he's looking at and they're focusing on the urban water suppliers, which as we know, happens every time. Where they should focus is where most of the water is used, which is ag, but they're focusing on urban even harder this go around than they did last. Some of you can remember what we had to go through last go around. So I think we've got ourselves well situated with this. I think that the plan that we came up with between myself and Eric and KSN, that we can address their unconstrained twenty-one percent reduction and get through the summer, I think, and not end up with any type of notice of violation, fines or anything like that. So, but my understanding and, and I had some conversations with Patrick this afternoon and he's already seen, shown me the numbers. and he's already seen, shown me the numbers for this, and we will be presenting it to DWR tomorrow for their review. And if they sign off on it, then we'll be geared up and set to handle that executive order and the resolution that we'll have to pass there, because we'd be happy to answer any questions they may have.
No questions, just a quick comment. So, I know we've allocated some funding for that turf rebate program that we're hoping to bring to the City of Riverbank. We funded it, I think, in like January or so, so it sounds like there might be more of a need for this program, so we might need to consider maybe expanding it a little bit more, but other than that, no questions. We don't have an idea on the educational aspect. You said there was a percentage, but we just don't know what that is yet, correct?
No, no, if we, I'm sorry, I should have said that. If we go ahead and push the aqua hop system, which we currently already do, that buys us another 3%.
3%, got it.
So, those just two items alone give us 13%.
13, got it.
And then, the other things that we're already doing will incorporate the other eight.
So, on the educational component, we have downloaded a lot of information that the State of California has already put together in an effort to make it easy for jurisdictions to be able to push out information with regards to water conservation. So, we are tailoring that to the City of Riverbank, and you'll see a lot of social media information come out in the next couple of weeks.
And Michael, I just want to give a reminder, when we had the last problem with the water, we did several things. You can do some things inside the house to help save the water, and that's with the hot water. There's a little device you can buy out at Home Depot to put in your water line for the hot water, so that you don't waste gallons of water to get it hot. I've got one in, and I've had it in for five years, and it works very, very well. I believe right now, because the cost's going up, it's probably a little over $100, but instead of running two gallons of water down the tub, it eliminates that, and that'll save a lot of water.
So, I'll look into that, maybe we can get it out through the website and that kind of stuff.
So, most of the use of water is by time, timers. And if you reduce your pressure by 21%, I thought that's what you were doing. By reducing your pressure, you reduce your volume in a given period of time.
You're very much right, Mayor, but we have a lot of residents that are used to 55 and 60 PSI, and when you hand them 45, they think the whole world's coming to them.
And it did.
Right? When I, Mayor, when I first got here, a little over 10 years ago, we were pushing out 65 and 70 PSI, and that's just way too much. So, over the 10-year period that I've been here, we've been slowly dialing it back. And you don't, you know, those kind of pressures, 65, 70 PSI is even as bad on the piping, on the system itself. But, so now, we're down around 55 and 60. Like I said, you get used to that, and then, all of a sudden, one day, you know, we drop a couple of wells, and they're only seeing 35, and they think the whole world's coming to them.
Well, let's get us motivated to the 35 PSI system.
I can motivate them rather quickly, Mayor, but they're going to be calling you a lot.
You don't know how many calls I get daily.
Oh, I don't, absolutely a bit.
Water is no problem.
Okay, all right. I'll, everybody heard that, so you can remind me when, when, when it starts.
Parks is one. Never mind. Okay, thank you, Michael.
All right.
Now, wait a minute, you said, the bad news, what you gave first, and then, the good news?
The good news is that we can still supply the water.
It was slightly, slightly less good news. Slightly less bad news, so we considered that the good news.
She gets this from me just about every day, and I start to come up with...
Okay, thank you very much.
I do.
Any other staff comments? Okay, thank you. Council comments, Councilmember Hernandez?
First, I want to thank BHRS and Las Palmas Torres for being here. It's always nice seeing you. I, with Councilmember Barbara Martinez, went to a few days at Sacramento for legislative advocacy, and we were both able to participate in different ways, and whether it was visiting via Zoom with our legislators and/or their staff, or in person, to advocate for more funding for affordable housing, more funding for cities themselves, and in general, more support for direct city funding. So, I feel like it was a good, even though there was a lot going on with construction at the Capitol and things being different with Zoom, they were good conversations, and Riverbank definitely showed up. And then, the Saturday, I forget which day, the 14th Yacht, which is Young Adults Fighting Tobacco, I believe, had a park cleanup right in front of the community center. There were 17 participants, all young people. They collected a bunch of garbage, but they focused on cigarette butts, and they found, in just one hour, 1,362, which, we want to emphasize that it happens in all communities, but they also wanted to talk about the impact in our local community. So, I believe they're going to be doing a presentation later on, but to talk to us more and to involve us more in how we can help as residents, and that's it.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Uribe?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just in case staff doesn't hear it enough, we truly appreciate all the hard work that you guys do, from every department, you know, management, new hire, you guys have a lot to deal with, parks and rec, with the influx of participants, the waitlist is just growing and growing. Guys are doing an amazing job, code enforcement, just doing, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing. Glad to hear, like, Sierra House is moving forward, Maricela sitting with me and just kind of digging into the state budget, just that little bit more. So, I appreciate all the staff, everything you do. Santa Claus Consolidated Penning Ceremony will be on June 2nd at 6:00 PM at the community center. They'll be celebrating promotions to battalion chiefs, captains, and engineers, so I'm looking forward to that event. And then, an event that's full disclosure, near and dear to my heart. So, Riverbank Chamber of Commerce is going to be doing a ribbon cutting for a new business. It's going to be Thursday at 6:00 PM. It's Wow Lash &amp; Brow Studio. It is my wife's business, so in the hopes of passing this down to my daughter one day. So, I'm personally inviting everybody in the city, everybody here. I'd love to see a good turnout, just for like, moral support for her, you know, for the family. She's going to have free raffle drinks, discounts, she told me to tell everybody, so it's at 2202 Patterson Road, 6:00 PM, and it's at the old dry cleaner spot, and I say that because we still have people coming in with clothes, and those are some fun conversations. So, hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Must be turnaround time for sure. Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Okay, thank you. As you heard, I also attended the City Leaders Summit presented by the League of California Cities, and one of the topics that was presented was about mental health. And just want to make everyone aware that by dialing 988, it's the National System for Suicide Prevention, and that's supposed to be effective July 16th of this year. And want to hope that everyone will enjoy their holiday, and please help us to conserve water and do what you can to prevent fires at all times. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Veterans Day is coming up, and so, if you could do something to honor any veteran that you know, do so. That war over in Ukraine shows how important soldiers are to take care of their country. So, I ask you again, if you know that, be nice to them and honor them just a bit more. Likewise, I think mental health is something that we as citizens need to help out with more. We need to watch what's going on, and if we see strange things happening, and are somebody that's doing a strange thing, we need to somehow get that person help. By doing that, we may save having children shot in school or some other, some sad thing that happens because they have a need to help that nobody's giving them. So, I ask you to watch the public, and if you see something strange, go to the police, call somebody, and maybe you'll save a life. Thank you.
I want to thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate your involvement in our community and also keeping us active in the mental health discussion. I would like us to take a look at some of the areas throughout the city that need repairs. I believe I've mentioned the roundabout at, near the Home Depot, there's other areas that seem to have had a meeting with a car, whether the car remained or not, there's damages that, we need to get our city spruced up. And the drought is here, we all know it. I just hope that they cut the water flow down south by 21%, but that one will not happen. And for legal, there's a lot of issues that we have coming on up, and one of them, I've mentioned it many times, is ag land mitigation. We need to have that in writing approved, so we could have real conversations when we do develop properties that have ag land on it. With that, we have closed session, consistent of Item 13.3. I'm just going to read the bold part. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation Snyder versus Riverbank. Item 13.2, conference with legal counsel existing litigation, Riverbank Land versus City of Riverbank. Item 13.3, liability claim, there's a claimant, Carlton Straff, against the city. Item 13.4, conference with labor negotiators, agency is being represented by Maricela for the employee organization, mid-management employees. The members of the public have three minutes to comment on the closed item. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on closed session item? Say none? I adjourn, I adjourn this meeting for closed session.
I mean, Memorial Day.
Yes, how's it going?
We reconvene the City Council Local Redevelopment Authority meetings on May 24, 2022. Item 14.1 is the report out on item 13.1 conference with legal counsel existing litigation direction has been provided to staff. Item 14.2 on item 13.2 conference with legal counsel existing litigation direction has been provided to staff. Item 14.3 report from closed session on item 13.3 liability claim. The council has denied the claim to Colton Strauss against the city of Riverbank. Item 14.4 report from item 13.1, 13.4 conference with labor negotiators direction has been provided to staff. With that, we are now adjourned. Our next meeting will be on June 14, 2022, 6 p.m. at this chamber. Thank you.